Okay, good evening to all of you who are here present and those who may be viewing online, and welcome to our monthly work session. Agenda is a little different for this, as you will note, and some of the protocols that we go through, we don't always do, so we're going to jump right into our meeting this evening, and I'm going to ask our sister town clerk if she will to call.
Mayor Marshburn?
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Vance?
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Notch. Before I ask you to adopt the agenda, I'm going to request that we add one item under our closed session. This, I believe, most of you may have noted from a notice from our attorney, but I'm going to ask that we add under 143-318, 11A3, to consult with attorney on potential or pending claims. Did I say that right, Ms. Attorney? So if you will note that for our closed session, unless anybody else has a change or amendment to the agenda, I will ask for a motion to adopt the agenda with the amendment I just noted.
So moved?
Seconded.
Okay, thank you, properly moved and seconded. If there aren't any questions, all who favor adopting the agenda, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none, so it is approved. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a couple of discussion items and then several reports this evening, so I'm going to open up the first discussion report. We'll have a presentation by Mr. Mike Franks, our budget manager, in regards to our FY 2021-22 recommended budget, something that we will be involved with now for several days or the next several weeks, I suppose. So, Mr. Franks, I believe you're with us virtually, am I correct on that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I am here. Thank you.
Okay, I recognize you at this time. If you want to let us see, yeah, there you go, we've got a good picture of you there, sir, thank you. So go right ahead when you're ready.
All right. Everybody see my screen? All right, so tonight, I'm here to talk about the FY 21-22 recommended budget, and provide an overview on the recent history, some high-level recommendations, and then answer any questions. I'm also going to discuss the recent rescue plan signed by President Biden as well, so there'll be a little bit of that. So FY 21 review, there was significant uncertainty based on COVID-19. Everybody remembers it was about this time last year where COVID really started to pick up a little bit earlier, so we were shutting down, and there was uncertainty about what does the world go look like in the COVID environment, how is it going to impact revenue, in particular, sales tax, how is it going to impact the development community? So we were extremely cautious with our revenue projections, assumed things would be pretty bad, things ended up being much better, but that's how we developed last year's budget of all that uncertainty. Despite that, the budget included a tax rate of .4971 per $100 of assessed value, which was an increase of three and a half cents above the revenue neutral rate. I would note that the rate was much higher than that, so we actually reduced it from what it could have been to get to the 46.21 per $100 assessed value. And the budget included funding for a variety of initiatives, so public safety initiatives, fire and police, funding to implement the pay equity study, which was performed and designed to get staff on the same level based on years of experience with the town, to make sure pay was equitable. We had the recurring funding for perform, public facilities, repair and maintenance. We've had an issue with repair and maintenance for several years after identifying an initial large list of items.
Excuse me, Mike, I'm sorry. Are you meaning to advance your slides as you're talking, because we're still on the first slide?
It seems like you're down on the list on the second or third slide.
Um, I'm on, my computer screen shows the stuff I'm talking about, so.
Yeah, I was, I was in advancing, so, but council can follow along, I was just making sure. I think.
If I go like that, can you, like, does it move, or?
No, it's not moving at all.
Sheet, I believe, the recommended budget.
Yeah.
The slide.
The council has paper copies, I was just, you know, for the, the presentation for the public, it's just stagnant on one slide, static on one slide.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm on the slide I'm talking about, so I'm not sure on that one. So we had recurring funding for perform, and then we had one-time funding to prepare for the November 2021 bond referendum, so some one-time dollars to do some initial analysis on projects there. So getting into this year's budget, FY 21-22, this is the revenue.
Mike, can you check and see if you're on the screen to sharing? We're seeing the static, the static screen of PowerPoint.
Yeah, I mean.
There it is.
Thank you, sir, we're now on the revenue screen, sir.
Thanks.
Yes.
There you go.
All right, so for revenue for FY 21-22, we're anticipating continued strong growth and add valuerium taxes with no proposed tax increase or tax adjustment, so same rates. So we had strong home growth, we also had the Amazon personal property growth, we had declines of overall personal property due to COVID-19, that was not something unique to Garner, that was something that we found that across the board, and that was based on the uncertain nature of the economy, what, you know, what does personal property related to a business that's been shut down cost now, so just be conservative there. So that did reduce things a little bit, but that was across the board again, not specific to Garner. We'd also see anticipated significant growth in sales tax based on reduced FY 21 projection and strong performance, so on FY 21, we assume that there'd be a pretty strong decline based on COVID-19, the assumption being that food establishments would be closed down, and different things along those lines, and things have actually performed significantly because they are outperforming or growth in prior years. The exact reason why is somewhat to be determined. A lot of people believe, based on the data, that localities like Garner are benefiting from the stay-home orders, or people working from home instead of going to a Raleigh, you're going to stay home, you're going to spend your dollars in Garner as opposed to going into the retail hubs or the business hubs. A lot of people think that there's the possibility that, you know, people haven't had to pay for daycare, so they've had the extra dollars there. There's also the stimulus checks, however you want to think about it, because there's no definitive proof on one way or another, sales tax has continued to become better, anticipate that to continue to FY 22. This growth is somewhat offset by lower income, interest income due to reduced interest rates, so the town consistently invests our portfolio, similar, not the stock market, but bonds and other things along those lines, and based on lower interest rates like federal reserve that everybody's seeing, we are getting more returns. And I would note, and you guys will get more information on this at the all-day long legit work session, that there was a pretty comprehensive review of in particular development-related fees. We looked primarily at planning and engineering because inspections, fees are so limited, we have already been generating more than we've been spending, it then seemed to make sense to do a lot of it there because it would just draw attention to us at the state level, and we have limited avenue to spend those dollars, but we did review planning and engineering fees, and those have been incorporated into the recommendations, we will review those in more detail all day long in the budget work session. On the expenditure side, continued reductions in group insurance rates under multiple years is intended to get increases, so there's been again a 5% decrease in insurance rates after several years of very, very large increases, so that was local news, and given that we have a significant number of employees, that's a large cost for the town, so as those rates reduce, it's a benefit for the town and for the employees to be able to have better coverage. We also did some resetting of the budget after post-COVID-19 world, so we did our best to kind of project what is the world going to look like through July 1st, for the rest of the year, people are going to parks, is the rec center going to be able to open, and what's it going to look like there, are people going to be going to trainings? So we looked at all those different factors, and also had to make some adjustments based on the fact that we do think some of those things will happen. We had to increase costs to get back to where we were, a lot of those travel and training costs, costs for things that, events that were not incurred COVID-19, we cut those costs, or eliminated them, so we had to add those back into the budget because that'd be happening again. We do anticipate significant growth in the revenue savings plan based on higher revenue estimates, so you'll recall that the revenue savings plan compares the adopted budget of FY 21 to the adopted budget of FY, the recommended budget of FY 21 to the recommended budget of FY 22, and looks at several categories, determines the growth level in those categories, and then a percentage of that is taken out of revenue savings plan. Because we reduced sales tax last year with COVID-19, and because we are now anticipating even more growth, and because it's the same with other categories, we are anticipating an even more order year than normal, so that is a big, big chunk going into the first revenue savings plan, and we have talked about previously that a portion of this will be repurposed to address recurring bond-related requirements, so that would be some kind of project management-related costs, acquisitions, as well as some administrative support. And we did have reductions in the use of one-time funding in FY 20, reductions in use of one-time will be reduced by approximately 460, so we have reductions, and then we're also identified some areas where departments made requests in FY 22, but they'll have some savings based on personnel turnover, different factors with COVID-19, so we're going to allow them, without those blessing, to go ahead and make those purchases with their FY 21 savings, which results in some savings in our FY 22 budget. In terms of decision packages, decision packages are the big picture item, big-time items, like positions, operating items over $5,000, so, you know, new big stuff. We were able to find a variety of different decision packages, so we have the administrative and project management support for the bond referendum, as discussed, we have two police officers to address increased service demands. As the town continues to grow, we want to maintain the same level of service, and departments like police, we're going to have to continue to add positions, we have park grounds attendance to address issues affecting public works with police in parks, and we have a GIS position in planning that's going to work around a variety of different initiatives. So while there is the good news, on a lot of fronts, you know, in past budgets, we've had to make significant reductions, we haven't had to go cut that much this year, we have had a challenge funding any decision packages, but we have several here, we are still a variety of needs that are unmet, so approximately 2.8 million in unfunded requests, so there are additional 2.8 million in decision packages that the town has not funded, and of that, there are 18 unfunded position requests, so there are still a significant number of items that are out there that we were not able to fund, even though many of them deserve consideration. So it's a mix of good news and bad news, we didn't have to cut as much as we have in the past, and it's a more stable budget than it has been in the past, but we are still not maybe fully addressing these are departments' needs in terms of what they've asked for. So moving on from the budget, I wanted to give everybody an overview of the American Rescue Plan Act, because this is something that will not necessarily directly impact the budget, but it's something that council should be cognizant of as we make budget-related decisions, because it is a large pot of money that will be received in the near future, so I wanted to just make you aware of kind of the background on everything. So some of the background, it was signed into law on March 11, 2021, it's the same bill that would have, you would have received the stimulus check for, and in addition to sending out direct payments to residents in the U.S., it also provides aid to local governments, so the town of Garner will receive approximately $9 million in one-time federal aid. Do you have the additional funding provided for programs related to rental and housing assistance, that would likely be more at the county level, but that funding is out there. The funding will be divided into two payments, you should be receiving our first payment within 60 days of March 11th, so that is coming out very quickly, and we will receive the second one one year later, we'll have until December 31, 2024, to spend all the funding, so it's not going to be like CARES funding was, where we were trying to spend it fairly quickly, we have a fair amount of time to think and plan about it, so that's why we're talking about it now. And we are waiting on additional guidance from the Treasury, which is similar to anything, a few of our friends that's waiting on guidance to see if they could get reimbursed for their small business loan or things like that, we're still waiting on the same type of guidance from the Treasury about what exactly we can spend the funding on, what we can't, but there was some initial guidance that was laid out, and go through that. So we have allowable uses, and there's a couple here, so the first one allows localities to respond, basically the kind of more human service-y stuff, I would say, so response to negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality, so there's a lot of different ways you could take that in terms of the types of needs you need to fund for the provision of government services to the extent of reduction in revenue, so this is basically comparing the prior year's revenue to the revenue that we had during COVID-19. If we think we could probably rationalize $1 million or so, this funding would be unrestricted, we'd be able to spend it on whatever services we wanted to, as long as we could rationalize that it was revenue that we would have gotten if COVID-19 hadn't happened. It allows you to make necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, allows you to include premium pay for eligible workers performing essential duties, that's something the town did in Walthwaite County several months ago, but has since stopped. And then it allows you to transfer to a private nonprofit organization, a public benefit corporation, involve the transportation of passenger cargo, or special use unit with local governments. So there's a variety of uses, we are anticipating additional guidance in exactly what we can spend it on, but these are high-level categories they've given us, and there's a lot of speculation that there'll be more details coming out any day now, and they are just generally running out of time, so there has to be some additional guidance here soon. Terms of restrictions, there are basically two restrictions that have been discussed or laid out. The first one would not affect the town, it basically does not allow you to offset revenue loss from machines that the governing body made, so if we had chosen to reduce the real estate tax rate, add more in tax rate, and we've lost money because of that, which would be a logical thing, we've reduced the tax rate, now we're not going to make as much, we can use the stimulus money to make up for that, and then no fund shall be deposited into any pension funds, so we are not allowed to do that, we will not be allowed to transfer that funding into the states. There are a variety of factors to consider, so GFOA and other major organizations have come out, kind of best practices based on, that we did just get the opportunity to go through this with the CARES Act, and some lessons that we learned from there that have given us some new opportunities, and this kind of chance to do it again with a little bit more planning, so here are some of the lessons learned, and high-level ideas. So one is fairly obvious, select one-time projects, this is one-time funding that the Fed, this federal government is providing, we do not anticipate this to be recurring in nature, so if we create new programs with it, or we create new initiatives, ultimately the town will have to take out those costs, so that is a big thing to consider, so we're thinking about capital items, things that are going to have more of a one-time cost that have the big bang for the buck factor. It provides an opportunity to address deferred maintenance, to enhance infrastructure, and this kind of fits into my first point, if we have infrastructure or maintenance or different things that we need to do, those do have long-term costs, but it's not the thing that's establishing a new program, and it's going to be, you know, every 20 years we need to replace something, so that's where the guidance is suggested you go to, is addressing those types of issues that you already have in terms of deferred maintenance, or enhancing your existing infrastructure to facilitate additional growth, or whatever, whatever issues you're experiencing. It also provides opportunity to build or rebuild financial reserves, unrestricted fund balance growth has slowed, fund balance growth generally has not, but a lot of it is moving to the restricted pot, restricted is where the revenue savings plan lives, so as we continue with funding over there, the fund balance generally is going up, but our unrestricted or the money that we can really do whatever we want with it has slowed, so this will be an opportunity, if we wanted to, to build some of those reserves. The town also has an opportunity to apply for additional funding to establish regional partnerships to local sellers, so this is the general guidance, so there's going to be a lot of money out there and create opportunities, and then a lot of opportunities, you know, if there are regional issues for towns and cities to bind their funding to be able to add it and kind of a partnership, so a lot of the guidance is to look for those types of opportunities, and to be aware of the different grant opportunities that exist, to make sure that you're applying for them, taking advantage of this unique opportunity. The town will be required to establish a strong compliance and management reporting program if grants are received, so the town has not received a significant, significant number of federal grants, and they do have additional reporting requirements, so that would just be something that we need to be cognizant of, if we do receive the grants, that there's just, there's, there's more that goes into reporting on it than does a standard, it's not, it's not as simple as just getting the money, or perhaps it is, but they do give you the money, but then you have to report on it, and it can be a very time-consuming, cumbersome process. And the last one provides an opportunity for city review services, virtualized during pandemic, and permanently convert some of those, so a lot of places, a lot of particular bigger localities are starting to consider, you know, they were experiencing space needs issues, and to realize we're actually able to provide these types of services fairly well with the infrastructure that we have during COVID-19, and are permanently, or is for the most part, making those employees tell work, so they've gone from issues working, maybe they were experiencing space needs issues, to having additional space based on the fact that some of their employees in some of their programs now be working remote, so that's an additional opportunity as well. So I'll take any questions on either the budget, which I should note, council will receive late this week, we're hoping on Friday, the ACT recommended budget, or the American Rescue Plan Act, which we should be receiving the funding for, and we'll start to work through fairly quickly, so any questions on either of those items?
Thank you, Michael, for that presentation, and yeah, we'll, we'll go around the chamber here and see who has questions. Did you, did you indicate when, when, when these funds are likely to be available to the town? I understand they're split into basically two allotments, is that correct?
Yeah, so the first allotment is supposed to come, is supposed to come 60 days after the bill is signed, was signed on March 11th, so, you know, early May is 60 days, so they should be, we should be getting the first allotment soon, and then the second allotment would come one year later after the bill is signed, so we should be getting approximately 4.5 million in the next couple of days, weeks, and then another 4.5 million in approximately a year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I do think, and Mike can correct me, or the manager, but I do think because we're not an entitlement community, that our funds will go to the state, for the state to distribute, so I don't know if the requirement was for those, that money to get to the state in 60 days, and then to us, so Mike, correct me if I'm wrong there, but it could be a little after that, if ours has to go to the state first, which I think it does.
It does, that's what I, I read this earlier today, that our, the municipality funds will funnel through the state, but Mike might have more info on that, too?
No, it's, I know it wasn't going to go through the counties like it did in the past, but either way, it should be, should be funding fairly soon.
Okay, thank you. Let's see what question council has, I'll start with Mr. Singleton.
Yes, Michael, under, on the factors considered, you talked about the town will be required to establish a strong compliance management and reporting program if grants are received. Does that include the approximately $9 million in direct federal aid we're talking about, or is that directly related to the additional grant opportunities with regional partnerships? Is it, is it both, both of those, we have to have a strong compliance monitoring program?
Yeah, I think, and David Beck, this town's finance director, could potentially speak better than this, how the CARES funding was, but I know there are federal requirements related to the care, the actual funding, but I was talking more directly about the grants, you know, various departments that may have never received a federal grant could be receiving one, and they might not have any administrative or funding to support, or anybody that has ever dealt with that, so that's when it can become that much more challenging in terms of making sure that we have, we are managing correctly if multiple departments have federal grants.
David's at the podium now.
Yeah, just, just to piggyback on what Mike said, I think it'll, the, the direct allocation will be similar to the CARES Act, and that was, didn't have a lot of strings attached to it as far as reporting, but we'll know more once the official guidance comes out.
Okay, I'm just sitting here, you know, reading some of this, it talks about a regional partnership, and I know one of the regional partnerships is transit, and it talks in here one time about the trends, about moving, transfer to private nonprofit organization, public benefit corporation, the transportation of passengers or cargo, so I'm sitting here thinking, I don't know if that's eligible to me, that looks like something that's eligible, so, anyway, I'm just wondering if the town's got to hire new staff, or have a consultant, or if we do this in a regional way, regionally, somebody does it, I just wanted to find, we talked about some new positions, and, and under decision packages, new positions weren't funded, I didn't know if this is something that was talked about as a potential new position, or we just have to wait till we get there in a partnership, and who in the partnership might be responsible? But somebody, but with the federal guidelines, somebody's going to have to be responsible.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I think it'll be a lot easier to answer those questions once the federal guidelines do come out, I mean, basically, this is a one-pager that they had on local government, that we're pulling from, and so there's a lot of speculation, but we do anticipate there to be a lot more guidance, and it's the same thing with the first payment within 60 days of the building sign, so they are, I mean, they just might have to come out fairly soon.
Okay, that's all I have, and I'll let others ask questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Sounds like it's, well, I was going to say, it sounds like it's like an allowance your parents give to you, but then they tell you how to spend it, right? So, at any rate, Kathy, do you have anything? Okay, Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Just one, as, kind of piggyback on what Gray was talking about, and, you know, problems we had, or we could have had with IT and what have you, with working remote and different things, is, if I'm understanding you correctly, there's a lot of things we would probably qualify in the, in our world of IT here, as far as making it better or growing it, is that, is that a correct assumption there, or?
It is, yeah, broadband infrastructure is the wording, and I mean, it, you can interpret that a lot of different ways, but I think it gives you a lot of avenues to, to consider.
And we're spending some of our current CARES funding allocation on some IT infrastructure improvements that we brought not too long ago, and we'll be looking at, considering other things we might could do, too.
Okay, if there's an opportunity here, let's seize the moment.
And that's several hundred thousand dollars, that recall, that we've got projected to spend, and you may have other needs, I'll say.
Now, for this funding, the broadband reference is largely believed to be for communities who need to extend broadband to the citizenry, which we don't have, so, again, as Mike said, we got to wait for the guidance, but a lot of folks that are closer to this than we are are thinking that the broadband reference here is for those communities, especially rural ones that are needing to roll out a service where the service isn't there, so it may be, it may be that we could consider, you know, broadband to get in one of our other buildings, but we know the other funding is unrestricted, thus being able to do that, so that's where we're earmarking to do that from at this time.
We're in a market, we have plenty of choices, but down east in some places, you know, they're struggling with that, especially as the kids have gone to virtual schooling and those type of things, so, and that's, that's been a topic of discussion for a while.
Mr. Dillinger?
Yeah, so I guess the money will come in and sit in its own line item until we figure out what we want to do with it. I guess my, my initial thoughts is, we have, or we have, you know, three years to spend the money, I think we're, it'd be wise of us to operate as we craft this year's budget, not choosing what we do with that money since we didn't knew, we didn't know we had, and we'll go ahead and look to the future, there's still some uncertainty, and there's still a lot of other things, so I think we need to have better understanding of this CARES money, how of this CARES money, how it's been spent, and whether these funds can complement or whatever. But I think, kind of like the allowance thing, kind of set it in the cookie jar until we enter the next fiscal year and not already utilize it this fiscal year. It's just such a short timeframe to try to understand, one, the restrictions, and, two, some of the other budget things we have to go through, even just a normal budget process. So, and we got the bond on top of it, so we've got all these things in motion. So I think it'd be wise for us to know it's coming and not try to tackle it this budget cycle, but that's just...
Yeah. I agree, and I would also add, I mean, this is, who knows what happened, but there is also the infrastructure bill that has been discussed at a high level, and if that were to get passed as well, that would be more money coming down to local governments. So there are a lot of different moving parts in terms of what that could fund as well. So yeah, there's a lot of different things. So taking a measure of purse certainly seems to make sense.
That's all.
Okay, okay.
I agree with what Andy said. That's exactly right. I reckon the only thing we may consider is if they get into this IT spending for the upgrading IT, and they see we need a few hundred more thousand dollars, I think we'd all agree that, if we're in it, we'd do it. But other than that, you're right, let's put it in fund balance and have a plan.
To that point, Mr. Singleton, there is still some, there's still dollars in the fund that we are going to use to spend for IT that are unallocated. So there is still some wiggle room for additional items with, from the other funding source that have not been fully tapped into as well.
But I think we find out almost weekly, monthly here, that we always keep finding some IT needs. They seem to keep growing. And just thinking, I started with the council, we didn't even have an IT department.
Yep, but we couldn't get by without it now. Okay, thank you, Mike. Counsel, any follow-up? Anybody? Mr. Vance, Mr. Dellinger, Miss, okay, Mr. Singleton, any follow-up, and Mr. Matthews, okay. Anything else from the manager or assistant manager?
No, we'll just look at the guidelines and figure out what we want to do with it, and, you know, conferring with the council and public or however we got it, whatever process, and then, you know, we'll try to make the best of it. So we're just glad to be getting something, because for a year, we've been saying local government's kind of been left out of the allocation for funds, and the county was generous enough to share some of theirs with us, but we're glad to be getting a direct allocation now. So, or soon, haven't gotten it yet.
Okay, all right. Okay, Mr. Franks, anything else at this time?
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Okay, thank you. And we will be having further discussions with you in the not-too-distant future, I'm sure. We ready to move to item number two? Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources reopening and programming update. So, Mr. Manager, I believe you're leading this, you and Mr. Hodges?
Yes, I'll be leading it, and Mr. Hodges will join in from time to time. And we also have with us Lori Clark, our GPAC manager, and we have our special events manager, Brittany Washington, on teams with us, so they may interject and add some information from time to time. But just wanted to give you an overview of how we plan to ramp back up with Parks and Rec. You know, things have been pretty quiet and slow for Parks and Rec for quite a while now, and with some of the restrictions lifting and, you know, the vaccines getting out and everything, we just kind of wanted to give you some idea of what we plan to do in the next coming months to kind of ramp things back up and get it going. This is, you know, the guidelines change from week to week, so some of this information could change here and there, but this is kind of give you some kind of basis for where we want to try to be as time goes by. So I'll start with the indoor facilities, and you have that in front of you. Avery Street, we basically are starting April 27, modified programs and have limited rentals, so we don't want to overwhelm the facility. And we want to also try to still keep some social distancing, depending on what the guidelines are at the time. But we just put a new roof on that facility and new HVAC, so it's ready to get going again. The Garner Performing Arts Center, as you know, over the last few months, we've been doing the GPAC at Home Concert Series, and, I mean, they've been great. One thing Lori did with the last one was invited a small audience in just to kind of pilot getting the audience back in the facility. And, you know, we spread out and everything, and she had protocols in place for where we came in and those type of things. And so that worked out well, and I believe she's going to continue that with some of the shows coming up also. And then we'll start reservations May 15, and rentals starting June 12. Basically, starting Saturday and Sunday only at 30% capacity. The Rec Center, to be determined. We haven't taken over that facility yet as the owner. Hopefully, that'll be coming soon, and we'll have a plan in place how we integrate that into our Parks and Rec offerings. The Garner Senior Center, Target Open, May 3, but that's just for select indoor programs, not just to open it to the general public, because we know that population's still vulnerable, and we have to be really careful how we open that back up, and then consulting with some of our partners, the Meals on Wheels and the resources for seniors. But we will have some reservations, as long as the participants are following the COVID protocol and the programs don't overlap just using the larger spaces. So we still want to, still want to, you know, be careful how we do this.
Just a quick question there as it relates to the Senior Center and the opening day there. Are we anticipating that Meals on Wheels on a modified basis or otherwise would be able to resume as a result of this decision?
I'm not sure if the corrugate meals will start right away. I know we're in discussion. I know John's had some conversations with some of the staff there.
Mr. Black, I've seen an update from the organization as to what their new schedule's going to be, but we're ready to hope to get some type of modified, maybe split time schedule that a group is divided into smaller groups. It's what she's hoping to hear, but as of yesterday, she had not heard an update for that.
And more specifically, I was interested in those meals that are delivered out into the community.
Yeah, and they're still delivering out from our facility, but I'm not sure if they're going to continue the frozen meal or some other prepared meal.
I think that's going to continue for a while.
The frozen.
Because, you know, they were delivering some home meals, they had staff, but they did the frozen meals with their people. They were just trying to be safe. You probably got the email, or the voicemail, like I got one in late December and early January that said, I think they were waiting at least a six months. So that's into June 1st, July. I don't know if that's still the timetable, but yeah.
Okay, all right.
But they have been delivering meals here, that's good.
Yeah, yeah, they have. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So the Senior Center will begin accepting reservations starting July 1 for rentals in September and beyond. So the portal will open back up in July, but the actual rental of the spaces won't start until September. And then the White Deer Nature Center, June 1, and it could open earlier if staffing allows. So the lobby will be open and just allow a limited number of visitors for modified hours, and we will start again on July 1 for rentals, September and beyond. So...
That would be the main facility itself?
Correct, the nature center. Yes. The parks, as you know, are open, and the shelters are open, and we have been taking reservations for the shelters. So, yeah, those have been ongoing. So while I got Lori and Brittany on, anything else to cover on indoor facilities that you might know about, even if it's not your area of responsibility? Did I miss anything?
Thank you, I'm all ready.
Covering it all.
Okay, all right, thanks. All right, so I'll move to the outdoor facility. The ball field, you know, they've been open since April 1, primarily to our program partners to allow them to start practicing and play games also. We're doing limited rentals on the ball fields. The Lake Benson Boat House opened April 9, and we've had a fairly steady crowd out there. We have, you know, we have patrons renting boats, and we have some fishing from the pier, but we're following protocols on that. Picnic shelters, as I mentioned there already, have been, it's been ongoing that those rentals have been going on, and we've seen really good use out of those. With so many other venues being limited, the parks and park shelters have been really popular. And we'll increase the gathering size as the governor's orders allow.
Let me go back up to the ball fields just briefly, and this, I may not be keeping up very well to ask this question, but so, you know, I guess Garner Baseball and/or GASL, are they back using our fields?
I believe so.
As they were before?
Yeah, not to the same capacity, but yeah, they are using them to start practice and start playing games.
They haven't had their opening day ceremonies and those things yet, is that correct? Okay, I see, Mr.?
Yeah, that's normally, it's usually mid-April, but I haven't heard anything about that yet.
John's back there, who's got some?
They have not, they've started practicing, but they have not had their opening day event yet.
Okay. Thank you, yes. I know they're always good about inviting some of us to come out for opening day, which is a fun event. I always enjoy it. So that's yet to happen, yeah.
They are playing soccer. You go by some tail this weekend. It looked like they wanted restrictions.
Yeah, I went last weekend. We stopped in, and they were playing, I don't know, tournament games, I guess you'd say.
Yeah.
Or league games.
Yes.
Good. All right, sorry, go.
All right. Programs and events, so preschool, we started about a week and a half or so ago, just starting with outdoor programs, just where kids can spread out. Youth, we're starting this week, afternoons at Avery with camps and modified leagues, and we did advertise for summer camp. And, well, that's lower down, I'll wait on that. Adult, May 3, we plan to open and just kind of restart with fitness classes inside following COVID protocol, and we're going to only use the largest spaces. And this is for the venues that we currently have control over. The seniors, talked about that already, we'll start some indoor programming in the large spaces. And then camps, we advertise for camps, and we were advertising at a lower capacity. I know those registrations have been slow to come in, but maybe as things ease up a little bit, and as we get closer to summer, when school's out again, some of the camp numbers will pick up. We have started hiring for camp counselors already, so we've done that. Carpool Cinema, that's one of the events we've been able to have throughout the pandemic. We plan to have another one May 7 and June 4 with a max of 50 cars, and the movies begin at dusk, and we don't allow anyone to get out of their car, so we haven't so far with the protocols that were in place. Lift Every Voice Spoken Word is a teen workshop. We have some individuals coming in and just doing some camps and workshops for younger kids.
Excuse me, I apologize. That program was deferred because of lack of signups. It's going to be tried again in the fall, so I apologize if it did not get updated on this list before we gave it to you.
I know I just signed the contract for it just earlier this weekend, I think, or last week, yeah. So, yeah, okay. Well, we'll try that again, but as you can see, we're trying to do new and inventive things that we haven't done in Garner before, so that's spoken words, getting very popular, so we'll keep at it. GPAC at Home, still first and Thursday. It will go on till September, and some of the shows are live at GPAC, some are being recorded live in an off-site location, and all the shows are able to be rebroadcast on our YouTube channel, and you're able to look at those after the fact, so on demand.
Could I ask a question? Those that are live at the GPAC, is there a select few people that can come there in person and watch some of those, or that's not...
We're not opening that up to the public.
Right, okay.
You know, if you or council might have some interest in attending the show, just let us know, but we don't want to advertise that it's open to the public yet. I think it's invitation only, because we want to be able to control the crowd and make sure they're going to follow the protocol. So, and we have agreements with some of the artists, so we have to be careful how we entertain our audience into the GPAC. And Lori, if you want to say anything more about that, feel free to.
Sure, you're absolutely correct. The last livestream that was cable borders, and it was a trial run for us just to see how we can manage our audience when things get back to normal or new normal based on COVID restrictions. But if Mayor Vee or any council representative intended, please let us know. We would be excited to listen to the invitation.
Okay, thank you very much, and we'll be sensitive to your protocols there, sure enough.
All right, so that's it for those events and programs. We're going to now turn to our largest event, July 3, and John's had a lot of interaction with the Parks and Rec staff and putting plans together for what we want to do for July 3, so I'm going to turn it over to him and Lori and Brittany there to assist.
And in addition to Lori and Brittany, Forrest Jones is also in the audience, and he's a part of that multi-departmental team that's been working on these plans. So he's also here if a question comes up, or if he has anything else to add to that. So Lori and her team and Brittany have been working on a plan prior to last week's announcement by the governor that some things may lift as of June 1. So the first thing we'll run through is what the plans are as of right now, because that's what we know. And staff has been planning an event that would be a drive-in event where cars would be spaced out in Lake Benson. It would probably be limited to about 500 cars, because that's about the capacity. We could park with spacing between the cars, so if people get out of their cars, they have some freedom to move around a bit. They've been piloting this with the movie series at the park and have a good idea of what that spacing would need to look like. There are some challenges with that. Opening the park early enough to get people in for the fireworks, but not early enough to get people in to encourage them to hang out out in the park, you know, for a long period of time is a challenge. The limitation of the number of cars is a challenge, so staff has been working on a plan to potentially have pre-registration and ticketing to get cars in. That brings with it its own set of challenges for how do you scan tickets in the dark, in the middle of the road, to get people out of the travelway, so we may still be closing roads to accommodate that number of people getting in and out in a short period of time. There's a very large challenge of how do we manage what could be a large number of people that are accustomed to walking up to the facility from all the neighborhoods surrounding it. So the question of how much area can be devoted to standing room, and do we delineate that in pods, as staff is using the term, or in some way painting a circle or square on the ground to get them in? And then what do you do if you have more people walk up that we have room to accommodate safely? So those are all some of the many challenges that staff has been trying to work through. And then, again, the hours, you know, maybe opening as late as 8:00 p.m. to allow people to get in before the fireworks start. Lori, Brittany, before we move on to the next sort of phase, is there anything we missed on that that would be useful for council to know about your plans right now?
Brittany? I think that hits on everything. With exception to, I think, some concern may be concern of mask and maybe the idea of contracting out a security company to help police that if that's also in place.
Thank you. So then after last week's messaging from the governor that things may change as of June 1, and I think I understood that we may get more guidance later this week as to what will change June 1, but I know I haven't heard it yet. I don't think staff's heard it yet, or we would have probably been on the phone this afternoon. But we're trying to think ahead to what, how could this look different if the governor says restrictions are lifted? One of the biggest challenges we have right now, or we are several months past the point in time that Brittany and Forrest and others would have been reserving light towers, extra cones, and all the things that make that event happen the way you're accustomed to it happening. So we feel like that we've got some constraint that even if the governor lifts restrictions, we're still somewhat constrained in what we can physically pull off at the park. So we have been talking about what would it look like to get people in, let them be out of their cars. Again, not open as early as we typically would, but what would that look like? And that still comes, again, with those constraints of you need more light towers, you need more porta-johns, you need more of all those things. We're pretty certain that it would mean having an event where you would not have food trucks, because it takes so much time to get the applications in, vetted with Wake County to get their approval to be there, that we're probably already past that. But we feel like that you could easily, because we do allow people to bring their own food and snacks in, if they're only going to be getting there maybe at 7, then you could allow people to bring their food in like we would anyway. So we are working through all of the what-ifs of restrictions lifting, but we wanted... So, we are working through all of the what ifs of restrictions lifting, but we wanted y'all to understand that even if restrictions lift fully, there's just so many constraints out there of being able to, to do the event the way we've been accustomed to in the past.
John, you mentioned food trucks, so I'm supposing that also would, well, would also either restrict or limit, you know, any other vendors that sometimes come out and set up out there?
Yeah, we, we would not anticipate under any scenario that we would be able to have vendors this year, there's just not enough time to fully vet them, and then that brings on another set of logistics of the cones to cordon them off and, and all the other little details.
Okay.
Lori, Brittany, Forrest, anything else to, that are points about the modified plan that we're working on now?
Well, we are planning to have, anything that we're exploring that, that possibly between 8:15 and 9:15, we'll have a band.
Okay, so we would set up a stage for them, I guess, or?
If we had the entertainment, we would be setting up the stage, and I think we're gonna have to, that's one of the things we're gonna have to regroup and just figure out, do we, do we have the ability to pull off adding that to the event at this point in time?
Okay, all right.
That's what we wanted to present about July 3rd, so all of us will be glad to answer any questions that you have about.
Okay, council, anybody? Mr. Vance?
I'm just glad to see the, the activities are beginning to open up with, with limited, with limited occupancy, and it's good to know that we are planning for the July, something for the July 3rd to, in, in this period of new normal, and I just ask that you continue to, to move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Dallinger?
Yeah, the restriction piece is always a, a moving target. I think just today, the CDC released guidance that people who are fully vaccinated can be outside without masks, and so it, it's always moving, but that piece of information actually makes it less troublesome to have something, and if, we could still require a mask, but it's, gives a little ease to having the event and having people outside that feel very comfortable, we can do something, say, for a significant number of people, so keep working on it, and we'll, we'll get something this year, it'll be, it'll be good to have something, for sure.
Thank you. Ms. Behringer, anything? Mr. Singleton?
I just think we're, we're 60 days ago, and this is over 60 days away.
Yeah.
So I would go ahead and book the lights and those type things, I, I think you'll see significant changes. I just, I think you're gonna have people walking up there, period. Unless you can have the police out there in gear, I, I just, you have to be prepared for that, that's, that's just a fact. Ticketing people to go in, that's, that's an issue I think can be resolved, and you're right, out there scanning in the dark is challenging, but I'll be prepared, and I think it'll be more than the cars that you were talking, I think, that, I think the changes are gonna be, I don't know what they're gonna say, but I think the changes are gonna be much more significant. I mean, if, and I'm not trying to be overly optimistic, but, I mean, you know, they're, they're gonna change. He, he, the economic pressures are forcing them to make some changes on outside events.
And the caveat on some of his changes were having a certain number vaccinated at a certain time too, so we have to see how that plays into it.
And, and part of the issue with things like lights and so forth is, we don't know that even if we booked them tomorrow, we can get them at this point, because that's typically something that's done six months before the event, so.
If everybody else is in the same boat we are, they're all on hold too, unless they went ahead and did it regardless, and just didn't do that. And you're right about the vaccine, but vaccine rates are misleading, because in the rural counties, the vaccine rates are lower than they are in the more populous counties. So, when you say that, that's, you know, that's interesting. How, how do you, how do you break, you say, okay, we're gonna go to Wake County, well, everybody that comes to our July 3rd is not from Wake County, we know that, so how do you do that? That's interesting. You know, they said, I think 50% of the people in North Carolina have got one shot, that's eligible, that's still only 50%. So the, the other ones get the second shot, that's still only 50%, but where are those 50% located?
Yep.
So anyway, I, 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 I thank y'all for taking the time to plan it and, and trying to do something, I know people will be itching to, I, I know people will be excited to see fireworks, whether they're in the car, or on the sidewalk, or someplace else, they'll be itching to see something come back. You don't realize how much you enjoy something till you miss it and you don't have it one year.
Yeah. Mr. Matthews?
Ah, yes, I, I agree with Gray, and I don't know if I've met Brittany yet, but in person, look forward to that, I'm into sound and lighting business, part of what I do, but like, a lot of the venues I work with, they're in the same boat we are, like Clayton, this, the last word, last week, they totally have counseled everything for 4th of July. I think we're headed to game, but go ahead and put in for the lights, put in for the porta-johns, call, let's go to this thing in an optimistic way, because everybody's not getting those things, because they can't make a decision, or they're not gonna have their event. So I think if we go ahead and, I agree with Gray, let's go ahead and take the lead on this thing and pull in those resources that we need, and I'm a very optimistic person, but I, I got a feeling some things gonna open up, and there's gonna be a lot of people that are not in cars, so we can go ahead and plan for that, so, but I believe we're gonna do it, let's do it the best way we can and make contingencies, but go ahead and put those orders in, and if the other towns don't participate, we'll be very popular.
And we'll go ahead and look into those items, and knowing that there could be some fees associated with them, whether we use them or not, so, but we'll, that's the.
The game you play.
We'll take that chance, and then.
Did you have the budget?
Yeah, but I'm saying, even if we don't use it, we still might have to pay something, but yeah, 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 we, we have the money, so that's, that's.
I think the biggest part of the budget should actually be something.
And the fireworks, am I correct on that?
Right, and we, I was gonna mention that although we've scaled back on some of the things July the 3rd, we, we will have our normal fireworks show, so that's, that should be at the same capacity as it's always been.
And I think regardless of what we do, I think we need to continue to emphasize the safety aspect of it, and to wear a mask and keep your, not everybody will, but we need to continue to put that at the forefront, that we're gonna do it safely, that'll discourage, you know, decrease the number of folks that just think, oh, it's, everything's normal. We don't want to give the perception that everything's normal, it's, Mr. Vance, the new normal, until we get back to normal. So I think we always want to put that safety part at the forefront, even though we know people just want to get in spaces together, they get closer and all that kind of stuff, so I just want.
Even if we can get all the supplies needed to do things on a larger scale, we know that we'll have to have some limitations to the number of cars, and, and I think limiting the cars, we can probably work around, but limiting the, the walk-up, it, it's going to be very challenging, and, and we're gonna have to ask for council support in whatever process we put in place to do that, because it, that, that will be a very challenging situation to turn someone away who has walked to the park, because then we're creating a situation where they may have a limited area to then stand in if they don't choose to walk back home. So, we're gonna have to ask for people's understanding and support and trying to come up with a plan that communicates well in advance, but also allows us to, to monitor and, and maintain a reasonable number of people.
Well, I guess my question is, if you're limiting the number of cars, you can probably shut down the road a certain distance away to not, to have the access point be further, all the way to Buffalo and Aversboro or something where you're counting cars, but also as people are walking, you can, you know, if that's what you decide to do, but if you wait until they get all the way to the park, you're in trouble.
Right, I think though it's gonna be much easier for people to understand their car, probably can't get in if they don't have a ticket, but those, some of those same people will believe, but I can still walk up and get in, and that's where we expect the, the really big challenge to be. I think, I think the ticketing vehicles is very manageable with a, a few details. It's the walk-ups of even the people who didn't get a vehicle ticket.
What's gonna happen is what happens usually, but maybe the larger scales, that people are gonna be out there on the sidewalks on Buffalo and Aversboro, and that's where they're gonna watch the fireworks. And unless we're gonna make them move, then I, and I, if you keep them where Buffalo and Aversboro is, they keep them all that far away, that's fine, they want to stand on the sidewalk and watch it, let them stand on the sidewalk and watch it. Now, that's what you have to accept, that that's gonna happen, they're gonna be in those areas on both sides, and, and parking out, or walking at the YMCA, you can see the fireworks in the parking lot, I mean, really. We don't allow people to wipe their park, because that's where they're shot off, no one's allowed to go over there, except the ones who sneak in the back, but they, they're laughing, it happens.
It will happen, yeah.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, it's gonna, gonna, you know, happen, so.
Yeah, we want to put on a, a great event, but.
Even 60 days out, the pandemic's still here, I mean, it's still contagious, we don't want to go backwards, the town doesn't want to be putting on an event that's like a spreader, you know, so we're gonna have some protocols in place if we do it.
And I think it's wise, and I'll, I'll go back to Mr. Dallinger's point, again, safety's gotta be right up there at the top in terms of priority, so even if we have to, you know, restrict some things, to make sure we put on a safe event as best we can, then that's a, that's gotta be a top priority, and I'm sure it will be.
Look, if they're not getting any spreaders from all the crowds in Glenwood South, and they're not monitoring those places, you wait a cou- couple more weeks, you drop the drive-by and watch some of the news reports. They are packed in there like sardines.
Yep.
And I got a, I got a store we service on Hillsborough Street, which is mainly the students, and I asked owner one day, a few weeks back, I said, what's it like? He said, oh, they wear the mask, they come in here, and as soon as they walk out, they come right off, and they're in their groups. He said, they're wearing it because they're required to. He said, but the students are very nonchalant about it, the enforcement.
Well, thank, thank, thank you all, unless you have other questions, we'll move on. But, but yeah, I do want to commend staff and those folks who are out there, like Forrest who are working with this, so I'm confident that we'll be able to put something on that the citizens will remember, and they'll understand that it will be on a more limited basis this year, and obviously our opportunity here, the North Carolina Orchestra will not be available this year, but we hope to resume that another year, for sure. Okay, anything else on that, council? If not, Mr. Manager, are we ready to move to manager reports at this time?
Yes.
Okay, we'll hear from you, sir.
Thank you for the Parks and Rec updates, it's good to get all this, and some people are here to see it.
Oh, you're welcome, you're welcome. So you have your regular report in there, the only thing I really want to mention is, we do have that Wednesday, May the 12th, special budget work session, so that's an all-day session, starting in the morning and going until. Other than that, the other thing I would mention is, we talked about the Meadowbrook and Jürgen master plan review, and I know the sentiment was that we needed to have time designated with just those two things, and so we don't have any other agenda items on that, and since you already have that time reserved, if it's council desire, we'll just designate the work session as the Meadowbrook and Jürgen review. We do need to confirm those times with the consultants, just to make sure they can be there, but rather than trying to come up with another daytime meeting, that's, that'd give us three to four hours of time dedicated for that.
Waiting to hear back from one of the sub-consultants who has been out of town with a death in the family, and we hope to hear an update, a confirmation on that any, anytime.
So question on that, would you be work session, which are usually start at 6:00? We just talked about three to four hours, do we want to start an hour early?
We can start early.
I'm just bringing it up an hour early, like a three to four hours, you know, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, I'm just thinking that loud.
We could start at 5:00, forego dinner perhaps, and.
We could still have some refreshments, whatever.
Let's add to it on the front end.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
I'll just bring it up, and you think four hours, that's not till 9:00, and we're going round and round.
I was judging by how much time we spent in the session we had over at the GPAC, and maybe we don't need as much time, since we've seen a lot of the elements, but.
Better prepared for it, plus you know we're gonna have two or three breaks, and Ms. Behringer, you know, lets us know, tells the mayor we gotta have a break, so.
Somebody gotta do it.
That's right.
Okay, council, if by general consent, we can start that particular work session, which will be dedicated essentially to that one topic at 5:00, does anybody have a problem or objection with that?
We'll, we'll check availability and confirm.
And if we do have to add something that's time-sensitive, it would be something quick, but it won't be a regular, like, report or any type of item, just.
Where we gonna do it at?
Right here.
I knew this was coming.
We're gonna do it at the GPAC, Mr. Matthews.
Yeah, it'll likely be in here.
In here.
I believe, yeah, yeah. We might could do it upstairs, depending on how much other staff and stuff, but we need to.
In the training rooms?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't have a problem having the training rooms, we need to. Could, could I ask you to be sure to call Councilmember Vance to remind him that we'll meet at 5:00 today? Okay.
Good God.
That's, that's a tease, that's a tease, yeah.
We did the last one here, yeah, so that's how many.
I'll send him an email, I said, no, it's okay.
And as a reminder, this session will be reviewing the actual master plan documents, so.
Yeah.
The document is intended to be, you know, a final document, the, the full plan, with any, you know, type of graphical errors, or, you know, errors, corrections, or things like that, but the program, you know, we're, we're thinking the programming for the parks is, is for the most part completed, so if, if, if that was making you think about being able to see things or laying plans out on your table and so forth, we can still provide any of that that you need, but again, the thought was more reviewing the actual master plan documents in advance, giving any feedback on content to go in the document itself, and then we also will have an exercise to go through the pro forma, this being developed for the operation of Jürgen Park, to make sure that council is on the same page with the assumptions that the consultant has been using, in terms of what percentage of time it would be used, local use, tournament use, those type of things. So we'll be spending a lot of time with the pro forma of Jürgen that, that session.
Okay, thank you. Maybe, maybe I should mention to the, to the listening public out there, my comments directed to, to Councilmember Vance are sort of an inside joke between the two of us, I hope, if not, he'll see me after the meeting, I'm sure.
Too late now.
No worries.
Yeah.
No worries.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Let's see, Mr. Manager, anything else from you, sir?
No, I don't have anything, any events or anything you need to talk, I know the GPAC at Home continues in the.
Your pending is, did you already cover your pending agendas in there, if they, you may have said that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what.
If there's any questions, I kept.
Yeah, that's what I was just going, yeah.
Okay.
Other than that, I think that's it.
All right.
I have a comment on the pending agenda.
Sure.
Well, the, you know, future ones, and it kind of relates to some conversation around Planning Commission and appointments that are coming and some changes we're looking at making. Planning Commission has folks rolling off in June, and so we've also adopted the new 160D, and so the chair had reached out to Mr. Vance and I, who are doing, we'll be doing those interviews, and we were talking to Mr. Singleton around some onboarding for the new members and some other procedures, and as I look at the agenda here, I'm seeing, I'm not seeing any but one of the ones that we've already seen that gone to commission coming back, but yet at mid-May, we've got three more, and so I'm kind of concerned, John, since you're doing planning stuff, on a backlog potentially happening in the Planning Commission, as, again, the transition's happening, it's a new flow, they're gonna be bringing on new people, so I just want to make sure we're being realistic, because on how long these things are gonna come, be on commission and come back, because if they're meeting in two weeks, whatever, and they're not on any of our agenda, I don't know what the expectation is, are they coming back for public hearings next month, or are they getting kicked to June?
So the public hearing starts with council on most of these now, goes to Planning Commission, and when it comes back to you, it's an action item and not a public hearing.
And I don't see any of those on, any of these agendas for May, so are they not coming back?
So planning, so.
They didn't meet this month, they didn't meet.
They didn't meet this month because you just got those this month, they're, you're sending those to May Planning Commission.
Right.
Then they will come back in June to you.
Yeah.
Okay, I was saying, we have one meeting after their meeting, so you're saying it's gonna skip?
Well, council had directed us to skip, put a gap in there previously, so we have automatically kept the gap.
Okay.
For, for that reason, and maybe others, but we, we weren't bringing any immediately after, because council expressed a concern that it was rushed after Planning Commission for public, public awareness, so May, the May ones will go, come back to you in June for action.
The ones we just saw will come back in?
June.
In June, okay. So, and this is all being communicated to the applicants, to that there's this stagger that's happening because of, okay, good, I just, I just want to make sure we weren't overloading Planning Commission with too many projects.
Right.
Got it, okay.
There is a backlog that, that Planning Commission and council are both working through, and we recognize that, but there, we are trying to continue spacing it out, or Mr. Treedenberg's trying to continue spacing it out, so that neither body is burdened too much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vice, I'd send an email to Mr. Dallinger, Mr. Vance, and made a good point that, you know, they come on in July, we don't want them to come on July and have five different issues they gotta deal with that are big, and I even sent an email trying to adjust all this, maybe you asked, you know, the members to stay one extra month in July if we have to, and next year start the process a month earlier, just to help understand the process, because the process has changed, and we're trying to figure it out, and so trying to figure it out, and so is the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I think we're finished with the managers' reports. I'm going to recognize council members now for council reports. I'll start with Mayor Protem Behringer.
Yes, sir. Today, as I was coming back home down Jones Sausage Road, I saw a cement truck turn into Hunter's Mark. Is that supposed to be happening? Great big cement truck, and he was going very slow, but he turned into Hunter's Mark.
Yeah, likely. If, I mean, I don't know for sure, but if it was a cement truck, I would think there was some project or somebody doing.
Okay.
Or addition, or something like that, so.
Bravo.
Yeah.
And I just have a question. Yesterday, I was working at home, and my doorbell rang, and I went to the door, and it was a serviceman from Duke Energy saying that he wanted to let me know that he was there to inspect my air conditioner. That's strange to me. Has anyone else encountered anything like that? He was driving a Duke Energy truck, and he had on the Duke Energy hat and all that, but I didn't see him stop at anybody else's house in the neighborhood. I didn't understand that. We have any information about that? How would I find out if that was proper procedure?
I just called Duke Energy's main customer service number.
Might even call, well, starting, not necessarily Maury Clayton, but.
I'd kind of surprise him that, as much as they got on their agenda, they randomly stopped at somebody's house and said they can check on your air conditioner, unless he got the wrong address.
Yeah.
All right, unless somebody was participating in any type of program that has to do with replacing units or credits for equipment that they may have participated in buying, I could, I could see it happening more likely then, but I don't.
That surge protector program, different things.
I think they would identify themselves as being part of that program.
Yeah.
No, he just said he was there to inspect the air conditioner.
Hmm. And what did you say?
I said, he said, only take five minutes. I went, okay, fine, but I didn't, I think real quickly to ask him if he was checking everybody's in the neighborhood or anything like that. I just found it very strange.
Mr. Beasley is weighing in that if you have signed up for their load management program, they do spot checks.
We have not done that.
Okay.
So it could have been a mistake. He could have come to the wrong house, or do we know? So who would I call with Duke Energy, just their general service number? Okay.
Okay, you finished? Uh, Mr. Manager, did you want me to come back to you?
I can, I can circle back after all the council members are done. I, I forgot one other thing. I was to give you some stats on our cleanup effort. So I'll circle back after.
I'll come back for that, because I wanted to mention something on that as well. For sure. So, okay, let's see, I went here, I'll go to Mr. Singleton.
I'll pass along good remarks from people around town in regards to cleanups, the unrestricted trash pickup and so forth. I'll pass along, please pass the public works, the good work. People always are complimentary of it. We do something a lot of towns don't do. And, uh, in towns that used to do it, don't do it anymore. I mean, there are towns around here now that don't even pick up leaves. So, uh, we do a lot of services that people appreciate, and the unrestricted spring pickup is one of those. And people who move here sometime are like, really? You can put anything out there and they'll pick it up? Yeah, other than maybe a junk car. And they might find out someone who can do that for you. But really, I mean, it's, it's a program that got started many, many years ago, and it's very successful, so please pass that along. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, I'll go back down here, Mr. Dellinger.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. One, I had some follow-up from someone in Cloverdale, that the Planning Commission in Raleigh had denied the apartment use for that land north of there, eight to one. They've been very active in attending those meetings and letting, and partnering with some of the neighbors on the Raleigh side, so they'll be going back to the drawing board to figure out something. The other thing I want to, as we get into budget this year, we need to start crafting something on our EV vehicles, plan for the future. I saw an article the other day that Biden's going to put 15 billion for electric school buses, so that movement's there. And I want us to sort of have a plan. Again, it's going to take years and years and years to do, but Apple just popped up in RTP, and you want to look progressive and, you know, forward-thinking. We could be one of the first municipalities to commit to something, even if it takes two years to get our first one. It's that kind of stuff that makes headlines and makes a difference. The other third issue is just, had someone contact me about, I mean, the issue I care about, the housing affordability in Garner. It's passing us by. I don't know what we're, as a council in town, going to do about it. Um, you know, someone was looking at, they had neighbors who lived here in Garner but wanted to downsize, and they couldn't afford anything, which is not typical here. People want to downsize, they can find something. So I think it's an issue we need to look at, look what other municipalities are doing. It's real, becomes an issue when a large part of our population, there are so many schools, when you have teachers and teach single parents who can't live in town, creates more traffic and stress and all kinds of things. So just putting that out there, it's something we need to look at a little bit harder. And that's all I got.
Okay, thanks, sir. I'll go to Mr. Vance.
Okay. Before, before the litter pickup, I've noticed that there's been significant litter pickup by a number of volunteers, and in the areas of the gateways of Highway 50 and Jones Sausage Road and Creech Road, those areas are looking much better. And I applaud all those who are out there, haven't had the opportunity to get out there yet. But for those who are out there, make that effort to clean up this area and make the town look better, you know that you are appreciated in that effort. Another thing, in reference to, this may be a question for Mr. Johnson, if he, if I see his smiling face up there, if he's still up there. Activity on Jones Sausage Road, there are people taking surveys out there, and can you explain what may be going on out there relative to the surveying that's happening on Jones Sausage Road?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Vance. We had completed our surveys along the corridor last month, but as you may recall, we recently got council to approve some supplemental survey up at the northern end, where our project ties in to the previously constructed road grades from the Amazon project. So they've just been up there to get a little bit more topo, to supplement what they previously completed.
Okay, all right, good enough. This will I have, Ms. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Vance. And Mr. Matthews, not forgetting you, sir. Okay, nothing?
Can I mention one thing, Jones Sausage Road? Now, I've meant to email staff about this. Where the, the track, the road changes from the newer part down to the older part, there's a section there of I don't know how many feet of a lot of broken up asphalt, and that is not going to last if the town gets Jones Sausage Road done. It needs to be patched, it needs to be repaired, really. But when you got that these heavy trucks now coming off that new section, right on the, it's between the school and the new section, right, and John, you can't miss it. It's a, there's several chunks taken out, and it just needs to be repaired. It's an older section, and because, well, the schools, when the school got redone, maybe paved part of that, and then you got this new section, this is the gap in between, and it's older and it's deteriorating.
That's right.
It's got the alligator stripes. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. From the mayor, I would like to echo the comments that have been made by council members regarding our litter sweep. I'm not sure if that's the official name, but I, I think officially, the promotion for that has ended. I've forgotten how many days it went, was two weeks or more?
Two weeks, it ended on the 24th.
Okay, so I know it just ended, and I know there was a group out just this past Saturday from a local church, the Capitol Church, even Miss Behringer's husband was part of that, so, so that's commendable. And thank all the citizens who participated over the entire duration of the event, and we're not finished. You know, we, we will, I'm sure, have some other publicized times to, to continue. We've made a, we've made good progress, but unfortunately, it's an ongoing problem that requires some regular attention. So to all of you who've taken the time to participate, my congratulations to you all, and thank you very much. Having said that, I believe we're finished with our regular agenda. Yeah, yeah, we were going to circle back. You have some figures for us, I guess, yeah.
So speaking of the litter cleanup, this information's from Katie Lockhart, who was one of the organizers for this event. And we had 95 volunteers, and they covered 10.1 miles of road, 19.5 if you count both sides of two-way road segments. And we had 82 bags of trash filled. Say they're roughly 15 pounds per bag, that's over half a ton of litter. The bag I had was about 40 pounds. But, um, so we're waiting on some bag counts from some other groups. There were some other groups that haven't turned in information, and we cleaned pretty much all the sections we wanted to. There is one segment on Eastbound 70 that we're going to, someone's going to do on Wednesday, tomorrow. And then we had a couple of segments that no one's gotten to yet, but one's Creech Road and one on Benson Road. But for the most part, we consider it to be a successful event, and I guess we'll do it again one day.
Manager, let me ask you, for anybody who may be listening out there in the public and they're interested to know, even though the official emphasis is over, but if they wanted to make inquiry about, you know, future or what they could do to help, is there a particular person at the town we could refer them to, or, or a number they should call?
Katie Lockhart, who deals with our nature-type programs and.
Okay.
Parks and things like that. And you can find our information on the Parks and Rec website.
The main number at whitedeerpark.com would be the best number to call. I will add that we're, we're planning another organized event, a two-week period in the fall that coincides with DOT's fall event, and she could probably let someone know if there's any opportunities she observes in between. But those are the two times a year right now that we'll be providing the materials and the supplies and coordinating those efforts.
Okay, and one, one final question. Do we know if, I guess it's an NC DOT program, they're, what is it called?
Adopt a Highway?
Yeah, Adopt a Highway. Is, is that still in?
Mm-hmm. We, we kind of did this in conjunction with that same time period, I believe, so, yeah, but that's still ongoing, so.
Two different.
Things, though, Adopt a Highway is a, a long-term commitment.
Yeah.
And adoptees are asked to clean up at least quarterly.
Right.
Oftentimes, groups that have a, a segment adopted do it during this period as one of their times. In this case, Ms. Lockhart reached out to DOT, and, and we got all of the segments that have been adopted, and she contacted as many of those as she could find to find out if they were going to do their section during this period. And if they were not, she put them in the rotation for volunteers to go out and do during that two-week period. So they are two different programs that sometimes overlap twice a year, but in this case, she took that extra effort to try to make sure that adopted segments would get cleaned, even if the adoptee was not able or not planning to do it, just so we looked better all at one, at one time.
Yeah.
And most of the major roadways in Garner do have a, a adoptee.
Okay, do they? Yeah, through that program?
Through that program, yes. You'll see signs all over the place.
Okay, and if persons or groups are interested in that, they should contact NC DOT and not the town.
Yes, sir, NC DOT Adopt, Adopt a Highway, if you Google that, you can find it. We can also get people a link to it if you need it. There's a map that shows the segments, and you can click on it to see who's got what adopted. And there may be some that have a name on them that, that aren't being actively worked, but DOT tries to patrol those, and if they haven't been cleaned in a certain amount of time, they usually require, they take the sign down for that entity. I will say that, that Police has two segments that they permanently adopt in town, so they cleaned those during this. And Parks and Rec staff adopted a new section this year during this period, so they'll do that on an ongoing basis. So you'll see at least three segments around town that have town department names on the sign. Police's is two segments along Vandoor Springs, and Parks and Rec staff is along Garner Road east of Jones Sausage Road.
It might be helpful in the town's capacity, when, if people want to do their own, organize their own, that if they could call the town and say, where should we go? And if we are maintaining a list of who's done what road when, it's like, well, we need, this, this road would be good for you to do. Because I think that's one of the challenges when community groups are trying to figure out where to go, is knowing where they should go. And so that might be the interface right there of, here are two or three sections that are options for you, because they just don't have access to that information on when they've been covered. And even if it doesn't coincide with the two periods during the year, it's middle of June, and they want to do it, and it's like, well, here are two roads if you guys want to do them.
Go anywhere, see garbage, I mean, kind of the short answer, but yeah, a more organized effort. We could try to.
Keep some type of database, and, you know, Public Works can help us with that, too, because they're out there, but yeah.
Okay, well, I appreciate the amount of attention that has been given to this, and we're seeing some results, and it'll be an ongoing process. Okay, council, I believe we are finished with our regular agenda. We ready now for our closed session, so I'll entertain a motion pursuant to these sightings here. I guess we need to actually cite those, don't we, Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to NC General Statute Section 14331811 dot subset A, subset four, to discuss economic development, and General Statute Section 14331811 subset A, subset five, to discuss possible real estate acquisition and the town's negotiating position, and 14331811 dot A dot six, three, I'm sorry, excuse me, three, for any potential or pending litigation.
Okay, motion properly made. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second properly made. Any question, hearing none. A few favor us adopting this motion to go in a closed session, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. Okay, the motion passes, and I declare that this council is now in closed session.